Okay, we're going to get started, and we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Erin, would you like to call right call?
Councilor Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Hammer.
Here.
Councilor Esba.
Here.
Councilor Langdon.
Here.
Councilor Mastin.
Present.
Councilor Nicholson.
Here.
And Councilor Gary.
Here.
It all works, so that's good. The next thing on our agenda is public position and comments that are already not on the agenda. So do we have anybody that has anything? Mr. Harvey, would you please come to the podium? And you all have a live mic.
Very dangerous. Hey, I'm, for those that don't know, or those watching or listening, wherever, I'm Russell Harvey, I'm the director for Main Street Green Castle. And I just wanted to kind of come and talk to council about some of the water issues we're having downtown. And I understand that some of these main breaks and things like that, they happen, and there's not a whole lot that we can do about it. I guess what I'm most concerned about is just the communication on those issues. There's a lot of businesses that, especially today, weren't expecting to be without water, and ended up being without water. And so if we know that, if we know that ahead of time, how can we either, one, connect with those businesses and let them know, or get it out to the public? I understand that we do put things on social media, and I appreciate the efforts that the, you know, the city has gone through over the past few months to really enhance social media communication. But I think there's still some gaps. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not here saying that I have that answer. But what I am asking is that, as an administration, that you guys can maybe just find some ways to be able to communicate more effectively. I thought we were having a text system or something like that. Do we have that, or do we not have that?
Well, I can answer all your questions.
Okay.
In fact, I was going to give the whole, my whole mayor's report was going to be about water.
Okay.
So I guess I'll have it early. Okay, so today is the, today, tomorrow, and Saturday will be, should be the end of the water on the 231 project. So what had happened was we, they gave us what streets they were going to work on, which they wrote the streets. I, our utilities department went through, located all the mains that they were going to be taken, brought me a list. So today was about fifty-two, twenty, about seventy people were on the list. I either tagged their doors, or we, I contacted, I physically called off businesses, and talked to them, if I could get through to them, if not, send a Facebook message, you know, whatever way I could get communication. So then today was the day that, to start on the first couple of, three, we were doing three areas. They went to start turning off the valves. Now, what everybody probably doesn't realize is that our valves, some of them are over a hundred years old. And we do work the valves every, every day, or every once in a while. We have a cycle that we go through, and they twist the valves. The big valves that run through the area, they're literally working on the main water line that runs through Green Castle. So it's the twelve-inch main today. They started turning them off, and some of them did not turn off that they expected to turn off. So we get the pressure off the line enough to get them turned off. They just had to keep working their way down until they found one that would turn it off. So at some point, the folks that were supposed to have the water turned off yesterday, or tomorrow, they're still going to have their water turned off tomorrow because they're going to a new section of town to make the thing. I honestly did not know there was a problem until Dave Neel had walked in and said, "I thought my water was turned off then." So we had no idea until that point. At that point, I went out to track down some construction workers and my staff to find out what was going on. And we started, the phone started ringing. We started notifying people that we could, we got Facebook posts out there. The problem is, is when we use our in-house notification system, it goes to citywide.
Sure.
And then we have everybody calling, "Oh, it's McDonald's shut down, it's this shut down," you know, the whole gamut.
Sure.
We're actually, hopefully in a few weeks, we will have a new texting device that we can actually pinpoint areas. So at that point, we could have literally kind of geofenced that area, and you would have gotten texts immediately. But the texts are only good, and emails are only good to be notified immediately if you participate in giving us the information. So as soon as we figured out Michaela, and, you know, Vince had brought to us setting up a construction email, which we have, what's the email site for that?
They can email US231construction. No, they can email 231construction@cityofgreencastle.com. I will get them added to the construction list, and then the mayor's office will send out emails, notification, information from an outgoing mailbox, email mailbox. So once we get emails, I add them.
So people will need to sign up for that, right?
Yes, and we've had that out on our Facebook a couple, you know, about how to get instant information, emails from the mayor's office. So as soon as we got that, we started. In fact, we've already sent out two or three emails to update what's happening tomorrow, what's happening the next day, how late tonight's going to go on to. In fact, I've got pictures of what else has been done. It's a big project. As soon as Saturday comes, they will literally cover up all the water lines, and we will be done with the water. They shouldn't be getting any more water mains downtown. The only issues, the only, well, because what they're going to do, the next step is paving, and putting the sidewalks back, and putting in curbs, and then conduit for the lights, and conduits for the stoplights. So the plan is that from Line Street all the way around to Find One, so I call it kind of the outer right angle there, they are going to put that back together totally. So people can move around town, walk in the middle of the street for around until they decide that they want Jackson. I have been begging my family to open up Jackson as soon as they can, but I'm begging about every conversation. I'm like, "When can we open up Jackson Street?" Even if we have to keep Washington Street closed while you're continuing. I don't know how much merit that's going to, I mean, if they're ever going to say, "Okay, we'll do it." But I have been asking, I talk to the end-up rep, project manager, daily. If not, two and three times a day. So we realize the water thing's been a pain. But we also, you know, it's kind of like when you do a house project, and you're putting on new roof, and you think the only thing you're going to buy shingles, and when you get the shingles all up, guess what? You've got to do work on the chimney, and you've got to do redecking and all that. The same thing's now happened with us. As we now have all those issues downtown, we realize that our valves are old. Very old. They don't work properly, they don't really look enough fresh on some of the other lines. They don't, some of them don't make sense. So the waterworks, and the utilities, and whoever else, will need to be doing a valve study. But I will tell you that a valve on some of these lines start at four thousand dollars, and this is just for the valves on it, to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. And we've got some big water lines downtown. So there will be an expense, and that will probably come to our, you know, utility customers that will have to foot that bill. But, yeah, we have issues with our valves, and we're going to have to work them.
Well, and I just, I just want to say, I do appreciate the efforts that's been done. I know it's a big, tremendous project, and I certainly understand that once you get into things, it's not always what it seems. So I'm not coming here trying to act like I have the answers, or know what's going on, or anything like that. It does sound like there's some gaps in communication, even with the systems we have in place now. And so just however we can work on those, that, I guess, that's my, that's my only ask. We can fill those gaps, if there's anything Main Street can do. We can connect with the other businesses, put signs in businesses, put whatever, and just get folks signed up, and make sure we have those channels of communications. Because it sounds like this, from what I've heard, or people that call, or whatever, and ask questions about downtown, I think some people, more than some, will be thrown off. And I know that's scary and confusing when you're trying to run a business, so.
Well, the city hall was thrown off and confused today.
Sure.
I mean, we pulled in extra people to come on in to the phones in the utility office. It affected not just downtown, we infected water pressure all the way on Wood Street, on Maple Street, all over different areas. And in fact, there was a Facebook post tonight that were asking everybody in the city to conserve some water because having this main line, it's hard for it to fill the water tower to the proper height. So you might have a little bit of low water pressure. But Oscar is not here tonight because he is at the plant right now, maintaining, seeing how much water they can get added to the water tower. So when everybody wakes up tomorrow, there's plenty of pressure and water to, you know, do everything they do on a Friday morning.
Prevent his thirty-minute shower.
Prevent his thirty-minute shower.
I have no clue whether, but, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're totally aware, and in fact, gosh, there probably hasn't been too many days go by that at some point, we have been trying to deal with the getting communication out there. But also, you know, if you know your business's telephone numbers are not on their utility account, sometimes we can't, you know, call them. So just call here and update your information, and, you know, that would be really helpful to us when they're in. If we don't have your cell phone number, then even if we send out notifications from the utility office, you won't get one because we don't have your number on file. So, and we, believe it or not, we have quite a few folks that did not have numbers on file for me to reach out and call, so. Is there any other questions? Dave, do you have any questions, or?
Yeah, I got to go over there.
Yeah?
I got called out, that must be a bad thing, right?
No, yeah.
You know, I kind of came in late, but I heard a little bit of what Russell said, and I would just echo his conversation. It's been very difficult for downtown businesses. For those of you that don't know, I manage the Starbucks and Eli's Books here in town. And it seems to be one disaster after the next for us. We're already taking a major hit for our business with being closed. You guys know that, right? But the lack of communication is astounding to me. The fact that we are two blocks away, and I can't even, like, this morning, I tried to call when this happened, and called multiple extensions, and not one person picked up the phone here. I had to walk here and interrupt whatever you guys were doing. And I was probably a little frustrated, so I'll apologize for that in advance. But when the most accurate information that I'm receiving is coming from the construction workers and not the city hall, that's a problem for me as a manager. When I want to know what's going on with this construction project, I walk out and bring water to the construction workers, and they tell me what's going on. When the city was saying, "This will be done in July," the construction workers were laughing at me, saying, "No, it's not." So before it was even out to the public that it wasn't going to be done on time, the construction workers already knew it wasn't going to be done on time. And they were letting us know that. When they know the water's going to be shut off, we've built a relationship with them, they come in and tell us, "Hey, Dave, your water's going to get shut off." I'm not hearing that information from city hall, I'm hearing it from the construction workers. That's not their job, that's not their job. And to be honest with you, when it comes to what downtown businesses are put through, we lived through the Bloomington Street debacle. I had hoped that a new administration and new city council members would fix some of the communication problems that we experienced then. And I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that communication. I'm not here to point fingers at any one person in particular, but hearing excuse after excuse is very frustrating for us because I don't get to use those excuses for my customers. I don't get to tell my customers, "I'm sorry that you don't get your product because we have valves that are broken." They don't understand that. You know, the corporation I work for, they don't understand that, right? They understand dollar signs, and what they want to know is, "Where's the business? When is this going to get fixed? And when are we going to return to business as usual?" The other thing that I would just add, when it comes to communication, is the mixed signals that are being sent out. When it comes to the construction project, we were told, "Hey, July." I knew, we all know it wasn't going to be July, right? That happens. And then we're told, "Hey, we got to shut both sides down, and it's probably going to be November." And then I see on Facebook, "Oh, we're back to July." Everyone with eyes can see that this isn't going to be done in a few weeks. And I think we just need to be honest and transparent with the downtown business owners about what we're experiencing. So that's all I have to say. Again, it's not pointing fingers, but from a business manager's perspective, it's very frustrating when we're not getting transparent and honest communication. Thanks.
So we do meet with NDOT and the project manager. We don't meet with the construction workers. So they give me a totally different story than what the construction workers do. So I will bring that up with our project manager, see why the construction workers have a totally different plan than what, than what they give us every update, so.
I don't know if it's a different plan, it's just that they seem to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Maybe the people you're talking to don't know.
But it is.
This is the way the work works. The people on the ground know.
Right.
It is their job, it is their job to know that. It's not our job to know that because they don't communicate.
So how does that your job, know that?
Well, I think it becomes the job of the city to relay that information to the businesses. To say, "That's not my job, that this is what you guys were elected for, I'm sorry."
We did.
You know, and relaying that information is vitally important.
We're talking about communication. And that's it. Like, I don't think we're saying, "Why should I let the valves get open?"
Right, it happens.
We're talking about communication, and that's the thing that I would think that you guys could, oh, right? The communication, that's, that was the one I think, you know, to mention the communication.
Okay, well, their next thing will be texting. I mean, there's so many forms of communication. There's Facebook, there's the email that we have for, there's texting. I mean, honestly, and Michaela was right down here when Dave walked in. We did not know that anybody else had been shut off than the list that I was providing. So thanks, Dave, for coming down and telling us, because at that point, I could go out and see what's going on. And I talked to the construction workers, and they said, "As soon as this gets on, it'll take us twenty minutes to do this one area, and we'll move on to the next area." So, you know, I talked to them too. And the, you know, they're hoping by now, before dark, they've got the other section done. And I have not received a text yet from our utility workers, but they're really forced to turn on the water yet, so.
I guess that's the point, right? Like, your Facebook post, it didn't make any specific commentary around time for it, but you did make the comment, "Should be quick."
Yeah, because at the time, they told me it was going to be quick. And then when they get down to the other section, it became this issue. Because I did three sections today. And then ran into.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I mean.
When did I get it?
I'm coming down there instead and watching all day, and, you know, I was hourly on what's going on in the construction.
I don't, I'm not sure how constructive that is.
It's the first step, remember, but I think you know the water.
Today was the.
Well, it hit residents too, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
A couple of young kids, a wife, and went shower, and laundry, and just when there's, like, no communication. And then even when you go seek it out, right? The post that I'm posting, or just, you know, they're just not.
I, I, I.
Today, we did not know who all had been affected because our water guys were out all trying to find and get things to them so they could get work on the water. What, what are they going to do, answer?
Focus the water?
Okay, so there's a good chance Saturday you'll have water off again.
So I just, I'm just.
Well, we can't give you, we can't give you details we don't have.
I'm talking about the communication that isn't there with this sort of unconnected issue that came up, like at home, right? Even once you're in the middle of it. I guess maybe just start writing your posts, just be a little bit more thoughtful, how would you frame it, I guess? Because it sounded like it would be a couple of hours. And if it was going to end up being longer because then it comes something else out, I didn't see anything about that.
Yeah, when I talked to them earlier, I was, it was going to be a short period of time.
Well, it's seven thirty.
It is. And they've got one more section that they said they would be done before dark.
And communication is the big issue.
And the fact, I mean, the fact that a city council member didn't know this was going on emphasizes the lack of communication with our business.
Yes. If we could know, it's also the first word, city council member. So if any council member should have known, it should have been that guy. And for somebody else on council to say, "It's not their job to communicate," that's a truck or whatever. That's very concerning that we have, we have members of the council now saying, and I appreciate the explanation that you gave, Linda, and I think, I think that you did the best you could with the information you have, and explaining that, how you just did. But it's, yes, we have the councilman saying, "One, it's not our job, that is exactly your job, that's exactly what you're elected for. And two, you work for a city councilman with a chuckle about it, you know anything about it." That's a problem, and that goes back to the communication issue.
We will try to be better.
I have to say, did you tell, did you, I didn't hear you say, I mean, I heard Linda calling fifty-something businesses first thing in the morning yesterday. And then they changed the time, and then I heard her calling again, all of these businesses. So there have been.
It's an incredibly impractical way to go about this. So that, that right there is the flaw, right? It's 2024, let's have, let's just get everybody on the same page with, this is the portal where all of these updates are going to be. Even if it was just someone dedicated to that on the Facebook page, and they were consistent with it, even that would be a significant leap from what I've seen here.
Well, Lori, and I understand what you're saying. I respect the fact that Linda even took the time to do that, right? That's hard to do, calling sixty people and things like that. And she has a lot of things on her plate, you know, everyone on council does. So I appreciate those efforts, but just like what was said, and what I said earlier, what I'm asking for is to, as quickly as possible, we've got to figure out how to fill those gaps, right? Because it's not, it's people at home, and we don't know, you know, people at home with medical issues, children, or whatever this is, somebody who has daycare in their house, all of these different things that affects that. But then we're also talking about affecting businesses that are downtown that some of these businesses are already struggling, right? They're already, and they're already in a certain mode of frustration. So when that happens, that just, that just adds to that. And all of this isn't, it's not a city problem in a sense of, you know, if a water main is hit, or a hundred-year-old valve, a hundred-year-old valve is a city problem. But that's, but it's not, it's not that. I think it just comes back to how we're handling this, and how we're communicating with the people, and how we're looking at the projects and the timeline, and how we communicate that because that's, that's what's frustrating people. Somebody at home, or somebody with a business, and they say, "Okay, well, this is going to be quick." And now, and now it's a half a day later, they don't feel like that's quick, right? And, I mean, and so terms like that are relative anyways. So I think that just, you know, as mentioned, how we, how we frame that, how we communicate, if that means something goes out every half hour, and somebody's step posted every half hour for a day, right? I mean, that's, it's just, it's just those kind of things. And so, and I'm not knocking the city's effort at all, I want to be clear about that. I think that the city has tried to do a good job with a, with a huge project. But it doesn't mean there's not gaps. And so as, as someone who does try to represent and work with some of the businesses downtown, that's all I'm asking, is just what can we do to communicate better and fill some of those gaps? And I said, I don't, I don't have all the answers, I don't know. It's just a simple ask. Can we, can we work on something and try to do something, and try to do it pretty quick?
I think, I think that's a, it's a good idea. I like the way, I like that we have social media, but not everybody has social media. I like that we do the phone calls, but not everybody, like you said, has their numbers on the utilities. I love how you've been able to do the power, I, you know, they, they send it out to all the customers. So if we get something like that in place, citywide, business-wide, where we have everybody's numbers in some kind of database, and then we, like you said, Russell, there we go. While we thought it was going to be a short little thing, but it turned out it's going to be all beaten out, so.
Yeah.
Be tight.
Actually, we, there's a contract, or he's going to review it for texting, and we will be able to, the problem is, the last time we tried to send out a notification, we got blasted back because then people felt that when we said there was water issues in certain parts of the city, then people that, that our business, or they thought their business was slow because of this or that. So we've been trying all these different things, some of them worked, some of them haven't worked. You know, I was a business owner downtown, I know how important it is, but we just haven't found the right tool that has worked well without messing, or somebody feeling their business has gotten hurt because of a notification set out, so.
And door tags.
And door tags.
They're very effective.
Yeah, and we sent out a lot of door tags yesterday of the folks that we knew that were going to be affected. And sometimes when you're trying to get that valve, the next step would have been was, we could get some of our other guys out hanging door tags that, you know, you now have been affected.
What about our website? Can't we just, like, keep updates, constantly going on the website? I think that'd be very.
Or Facebook. If someone down on Facebook had said, "Twelve o'clock, we know the water's still out, we're working on it." "Twelve-thirty, we know the water's still out, we're working on it." I mean, me personally, if it was my house, I would appreciate that if I had more updates rather than just, you know, waiting three or four hours and still not knowing it. I mean, just at least knowing that someone is at the wheel and is aware, I mean, obviously.
And that's, and I think that's kind of my point, doing that, but, you know, you got to think about, not everybody, not everybody has social media, right?
Right, and that's.
It's easy, Sydney Green Castle, there you go. You know, there we are, why don't we have any of that? That seems like the most simple, I mean, I think everybody pretty much got a computer in their pockets.
I think that's the problem, is the information isn't there, even if you're trying to find it.
Yeah, well, there you go.
So we need to kind of stream or, like, run across the town our website as well.
Something like this, you know, once we know.
Right, and do what all the other businesses do, tell them it's going to be three hours if you think it's only twenty minutes. Because what makes people, seriously, because Dave, you look like a good guy when it's only twenty minutes. Seriously though, telling people, telling people it's going to be quick, and then it's three hours later. But if you told people three hours, "Hey, we're looking at a three- to five-hour project."
Under promise.
You know, we can go get dinner, we can go make plans, and then, I think that's where the frustration comes in with the communication.
But if you do that, then you say it's three hours, then people won't go to that restaurant. Or cancel their hair thing, or, yeah, it's hard, it's hard. But your point is well taken.
Right, it's just communication.
So like, today, I said, "What time are you starting tomorrow?" So like today, I I said, what time are you starting tomorrow? I said, are you starting at the seven o'clock that our project manager told me before he went and had a baby, his wife had a baby? And they said, we can't tell you what time we're gonna start. So I don't know what time they're gonna get to mo- to tomorrow's project.
So does the city have any traction with the state to be able to hold them accountable for any of this? I mean, can we not get our state reps involved or our state senators to say, hey, guys, we need better communication?
I think a lot of it is, is they're under contract to provide certain services and they're not in reach of contract yet, so.
So until that happens.
Until that happens.
It's between the state and and I mean, you could always contact people at the state and and I mean, we can contact.
But the answer to Dave's question is yes, there's room to contact state reps and all of that to actually push for better communication.
From the state.
So we so we understand that they're not in violation, but but if I understand the question it's asking, yes, we can reach out to those people to apply pressure, say, hey, we can't just have a rain and start time in the morning. It benefits us to know that, right? And if we if we get that, that's great. But if we're not even pushing on that, we're not leaning on state reps and those to be helping us out in this area, again, that's their life. So we 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 should be doing that. And if we're not, as a as a city unit, um, or as council people, then I would say shameless. We we need to.
And Main Street could do.
I I don't have any information. What am I supposed to do? I don't get anything. I mean, I'm here asking for information. So what? What? What's the, what am I, what am I supposed to ask?
I'm saying, but no, I'm saying, but Main Main Street could be an advocate too.
Main Street could be an advocate.
Is what I'm saying. That was my point.
Main Street is an advocate for downtown, for businesses and 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 all of that. So I can certainly do that, but I mean, I I don't I don't I don't know, I don't know any details of any of the project. You guys do.
It would make sense to use somebody like Russell so that you're not the one making the fifty phone calls or whatever, you know? But you make one phone call, you go about whatever else, and then Russell gets to, I'm just saying, with the Main Street component, Russell's the Main Street guy to be able to reach out to us Main Street people with the email blast or whatever it is. And that is something.
Not what I put any more work on here. No, 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 that's, and I and I don't mind doing that, but that but that I guess that's my frustration and that's why I'm here tonight. Because people will call me and I don't and I don't know, right? I don't, and so businesses wanna know or people downtown wanna know or whatever, or for some reason people think think that I that I should know. So Lori, one hundred percent, I would I would, well, Linda, I would call whoever I need to call.
And you can help, help us facilitate the communication.
And I will certainly do that, but I need.
Hey, Russell, are you on the email, like for your two thirty one construction?
I'm not.
Did we see the email?
I'm not.
Can you, uh, ask to be on it?
I would. Yep, two thirty one construction.
Yeah, we have about forty, fifty.
Thirty five, thirty five.
Yeah, no, that's and and I will I will certainly do that. I think there's ninety two, ninety three businesses in the and just in the Main Street footprint alone. So I think, you know, we're we're off by half of it right now. So anyways, I don't I don't wanna keep circling around the centuries and all that. I know.
We'll get the information out to you.
Russell, I don't know what your.
More frequently and as we get it.
I don't know what your agreement is with your members, but if you have an email list and you don't think they'd mind, maybe you can give the whole email list to us and we can just automatically subscribe people.
We could add them to it.
Sure. Yeah.
I'm sure they wouldn't be upset by that.
No, we want the information. We don't technically have numbers, so yeah, we can, yeah.
It's US two thirty one.
Just two thirty.
Two thirty one construction.
Ash, can you bring us about?
Mm-hmm.
If I, let's just try this out. I think I can put it up on the screen. And then if you don't read my hand writing, it will be the second. Oh, no.
As she puts it on, we'll just go ahead and move on. So do we have any, oh, wait, Kayla must sit down.
Russell and David and I don't remember any. Casey, thank you, because we, obviously, we can do better, right? We're gonna try to get more information out to you guys and do it in a more timely manner. I know that the mayor is working on some things right now to make that happen. Well, I'm, we're a business owner too, right on the square. And tomorrow morning our water, we got a phone call, um, the day, it was Tuesday, I think, cause we were at the hospital. But, um, yeah, we got a phone call on Tuesday and it said that it was just gonna be out Friday morning, but we're anticipating probably longer than that. Yeah, and and we're a barber shop, so we need water, right? We need water.
No, can I can I do, I'm, but I I do appreciate you guys, and I know it's not, it's not easy.
Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, no special requests? Okay, um, you all received the department head reports in the in the packets. Does anybody have any questions or anything for our department heads? As you all know, um, Jason Keeney is serving right now as the interim director for the the pool, uh, or the Parks Department. Um, he's really excited. He got really good news today on the the pool status. Uh, so we kind of lost it where everything was in in the perfect satisfactory range on our swimming reports. So, uh, we have made some changes and, um, had a couple of new little pieces of equipment we had put in and it's made a little difference. Um, I wanna personally thank all of our, um, department heads and city employees for a great celebrate, uh, celebration at the sports park for July fourth. It was very well attended and, um, I think the only problem we really had was, uh, got a little smoky, but, um, the air was kind of heavy that night, so, um, but other than that, um, there will be some discussion. The Parks Board's responsible for that event. So there will be some discussion on chair over the next couple of weeks and month about whether the July fourth, um, events will be held out at the sports park from now on. So, um, we'll just kind of say, stay tuned to decide what we're gonna do with, uh, July fourth. But we really do appreciate, uh, fire boys and street department helped to get the facilities ready and Jason and his staff and the folks at the cemetery came over and helped. So there was a lot of, um, combined effort to make that event happen. So does anybody have anything for them? Okay, I kind of gave my report early, um, about the water, but, um, the city will be seriously looking into, uh, kind of a valve situation. Um, they are kind of a mess right now and they're old and they're expensive to replace and and try to do that. We're also, um, hoping here in the next couple of weeks we'll have our our texting out. The problem with our current in- information that runs through the utility is it it has to go citywide. And sometimes the information doesn't need to go citywide. It needs to just go to a particular area. So, uh, we have, uh, been really talking and thinking about, uh, communication as we do more things in the city and try to make, uh, improvements. It kind of starts uncovering the things that don't really work right sometimes, so, um, yeah, but we're working on that. That's all I have. So Kayla?
Yeah, um, the Department of Treasures Department attended, um, State Board of Account School and the Indiana League of Municipal Works and Treasures, um, annual training, June twenty third through twenty seventh. Uh, it was extremely valuable, um, hearing from other professionals in the state. Um, Board of Accounts had full trainings for three of those days where we learned, um, a lot of information. The SLFRF, um, Grant is a big one right now that municipalities have. So, um, just, um, key points to keep in mind and look out for. I just received and spend those, uh, federal federal dollars. It was a busy couple of days and we learned so much. Um, multiple sessions touched on the July two thousand twenty five deadline to stream all citywide meetings. Um, so today we have our equipment set up and, uh, I'm trying to learn how to use it. I knew what an encoder was from our training, so I was able to put the pieces together. Um, tech is is not really my thing, but I'll figure it out and and we'll get through it. I am excited, um, because I think it it's a unique point of transparency for city government. Um, I know that the city, City of Green Castle was one of the first municipalities to, I don't know, even call streaming on the TV, cable access. That's before, before me. So cable access, it's before streaming.
It was prior before you were born.
Mine did. Oh, I think it was.
Yeah, okay, so that's why I don't know.
There are a couple of us in here remembering.
Um, so I think the city has always really, um, strived to do their part. Um, but now we're just in the the new generation of doing that and everyone's gonna be doing it as well. Um, so we had a lot of training on that. Um, and then after we returned from training, um, my deputy treasurer and I attended a per, um, a police and fire pension in for for meeting. Um, that was extremely beneficial. They knew the information from the audit side, like give me the census data. But it's a totally different ballgame, um, being on this side and administering those programs. Um, so we continued that and that would go with the official. So we had a lot of training in June, um, so that we can do do our job the best we can. Training, tech, we will, you guys will all go through training once we get that set up. Um, you guys will all have laptops where you will pass your votes, sign in that you're here for your roll calls, um.
Lock in.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah. Uh, so baby steps as we all learn this new tech. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be awesome, um, but it's gonna be a learning experience for all of us, but it's gonna be good. Um, I feel like I have a lot of things, but those were the main things.
It's take evidence.
Okay. You guys have any questions? All right, great. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, council reports, we can start with this.
Awesome, uh, just one thing today, uh, but I guess it may be a big thing. Uh, I know it's really easy for us to get tunnel vision on solving the problems right in front of us, like obviously, construction and supporting businesses and water updates, whatever that may be. Um, but there is a a trend happening in a lot of cities that I'd like to suggest we form some kind of advisory committee to see if it's something we should do here. And that's a designated outdoor refreshment area. Um, I have one copy of Noblesville's, uh, Dora Ordinance. I'm having to pass it around. Maybe someone can make copies. But what it does, and I think we need input from the community to see if it makes sense for us, but if we were to move forward with it, would allow, um, our our shopping district or our downtown district to, um, sell, uh, alcohol beverages that can then go into the shops and help promote people shopping in our shops. Uh, every city that's doing it's doing it differently. Uh, the city has the ability to put parameters on it as tight as we want. We could do it on First Fridays or we can do it on Saturdays or we can just do it for one hour a day, one day a week, whatever that is. But, uh, I'd like to kind of start that process of forming some kind of committee and getting people talking about it and seeing if it's something. Uh, I do know that a lot of our downtown, uh, restaurants and businesses are in support of it uh, and that, uh, Main Street would be interested in in taking a role of forming some kind of conversation around it. Although Main Street's board has not, um, you know, formally, uh, said that they want this. They're just open to facilitating a discussion, I'll be clear. Uh, but I don't, I know enough to be dangerous. I don't know if you know.
I went to an entire day's worth of training in Indianapolis. No, I was in Plainfield on it. And and it was extremely well attended by people all across the state who had a lot of interest in in the, it was that and, uh, festivals and things like that, yeah, other other topics. But the main topic was Dora since it's relatively new. And so, yes, we had talked about doing that, um, uh, for the next season. Um, and while we get input as far as how you wanna structure it, do you want to have separate ones? Cause you can have them, uh, since we have two thirty one, you can have more than one. It is limited. But, um, and then there are the other issues about in the park, but then that's a whole different, that's a whole different, uh, standard. And I don't think that it would work there because the the restaurants aren't there located there. And you have, anyway, there are a lot of complicating factors, but yes.
Yeah.
I would be interested in, uh.
Yeah, can we give you this if you wanna?
I've got, I've probably got it.
Thank you.
What's really interesting about theirs and maybe everyone's doing it, uh, they have really good maps and graphics.
Yeah.
Just kind of outlining it all. I'll pass it around.
In fact, I sat with the Noblesville people at that at that conference, the three of them.
They're great. They're they're mayor and council. They're a really impressive group.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted to start that conversation, see if we can add some committee.
I remember that, cause actually I was gonna talk about that tonight too.
Really?
I was a local attorney and, um, who brought that up to me and so I think it's a fantastic idea.
Great minds.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're, we were planning on to start starting that for next First Friday season, since we're always through this one. So maybe kind of here after First Friday ends, we could group together and get working on it.
Yeah, discuss the parameters and how how long, I I assume we would want one for every first, to include every First Friday, but you do you also want to include other days?
Mm-hmm.
Which days? What's your footprint? Um, all all of that needs to be discussed and decided, you know?
Yeah, could be really cool.
Yeah.
And that's that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I remembered my other point. Since then, so at first, I just, we mentioned it earlier, but I was also, uh, you mentioned last month about starting a speaking up group, um, and we got that up and running. So Eric, two thirty one construction at cityofgreencastle.com. Email it. I'll add you to that outbox.
Thank you for taking that on. I know it's a lot of work to upkeep it and.
Two thirty one.
Construction.
Construction at cityofgreencastle.com.
Yeah, that's what you said through.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Um, yeah. Yeah, I think we had, I just got four emails.
I reshared it on Facebook too, so hopefully it just keep going and going.
Perfect, yeah. I didn't get it done until after we got back from the conference, but that's quite a staff and my conference updates and everything is.
Department head, you can leave a few. One. Thanks. I think I'm hanging on for a minute. Um, Kayla?
I actually have questions.
Okay.
Okay, so the, um, my daughter was in town helping her friend house it. Now, I live in town, but I think everybody here knows where I live. We don't hear the, uh, tornado siren. We used to years ago out where I'm at, but we haven't heard it for years. So I didn't know if that was something that we could look into or whoever at the city, I don't know who to talk to, but I will. Um.
It's John, which is what I'm handling Thursday, I think I'm here.
Because we used to be able to hear it years ago. So I didn't even think of it. McKenna came home, it's like, do you really have a tornado siren? And I was like, yeah, but she just never hears it at home. Um, then another question is, um, the road on Shadow Lawn and, um, college?
That's one question.
It seems to be settled pretty good now. When is that gonna get fixed, do you know?
Um, I'll tell you six, six weeks from now.
Okay. That's good.
I I hate to even say, but I think it's gonna be done, but.
It's on your list, okay.
Well, we we entered into a.
We've given, we have a contract, we have a notice proceeding, a notice to overall proceed the whole deal. So as soon as they get here and start to work, um, and and they're doing, uh, several neighborhoods here in Draper and North and Court. So I'm not, I can speculate, but it might get me in trouble, so I'm not gonna speculate.
Tell it fine.
You didn't have like a timeframe within the contract?
Yeah, they they have until, um, sometime in September to get it done, but.
But that's including a lot of other.
Uh, another.
Other issues too, so.
It. Go ahead and start on our listening.
Okay, hope. Um, another thing is, so the Fourth of July, I loved it because I live right down on Foulmore Road. Crown did open up the parking lot across the street from me. However, I was really disappointed that they did not allow their main. that they did not allow their main, um, parking lot over in their manufacturing. They closed it off to the public. Is that something, if we do move that out there, that we should have a discussion with them? That, uh, you know, prior maybe tax abatements they were given for the City of Green Castle? That they could include themselves in our community?
I don't think, I don't think it was even anticipated that it was going to be as big as it was out there. And, and so, but that was already discussed as part of the plans for next year, how to, how to expand the parking.
Cause I do know that the, um, the county sheriff even said that if they have like a worry of trash, that he would have no problem making sure that was cleaned up, so.
And there wouldn't be trash.
Well, actually, there, there was just barely a little bit across the street. I was pretty impressed, cause I was actually like, it always blows over in my yard. They did pretty good, I mean, there wasn't a part of any trash left in there.
I know that, that my neighbor, uh, he was out there on July, they kept parking lot, so.
Across the street?
For crap. Not, not the one that was open, the one that was closed. People still went over, shot bomb rockets and landed in the parking lot. And people still went over there for smart boards. Can't have those things in the parking lot with people tired or something, so. So I think, yeah, you're right, I think we need, uh, they can, we, we need to be able to be a good neighbor with them. We'll get it cleaned up, cause it's not, it's not durable for having all that trash on the block.
That's it, that's all I have.
We were actually shocked by the attendance out at the sports park. We did not expect to fill the majority of our, and then we figured there might be some parking in the grass, but wow, it was a lot. Showed up, so it was a really good evening.
Well, Shadow Lawn was my big thing, I was just talking about get finished and work whatever life I have to be in. But, uh, so, so Beth brings us up about, and I just glanced at the Noblesville ordinance. We have a place up in, in northwestern Michigan, small town, a resort town. And they have, every Friday night during the season, they have what they call scroll streets. And kind of the same thing, instead of having like fan stages, you know, they'll be on the corner, there'll be three people, you know. Bluegrass folks will be down here, and the Grateful Dead guy will be over here, you know, somebody else will be over there. And I mean, it's packed. And they've done the same thing that Noblesville did, they've created a district, and their signage, a lot of park for your TV thingy, you know. No, I won't be on this one. You know, that's not like seven days a week where they miss, through the streets and then they're in certain events, so. I thought, I thought the people were, First Fridays, I've been to people during the meeting, are they already on there? Is the idea that we need to have a dedicated district?
The, the benefit to a, a Dora is it doesn't have to be event focused. So in theory, just a hypothetical used as example, we could say, um, Monday through Friday from six PM to eleven PM every week, you can do this.
You can just walk through downtown.
Within the district, within the businesses participating, so it, it's not event focused, it, it can be event focused, but.
It can be outside, walking down the street.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's more broad than, than a First Friday. Or it could be as narrow as a First Friday, it would be up to us to determine the ordinance.
That's all, I just wanted to share the one thing.
Me too.
Uh, one quick thing, just a reminder, uh, schools are gonna start National Night Out, this is July twenty-ninth, from five until eight, we have that behind us next time we meet. So I know it's a wonderful event, and then we could use some volunteers and, uh, up the fairgrounds and I'll be here before we know it, so.
I have nothing now, thanks, guys.
I'm so sorry, I would have never expected.
No, you're fine, no, you're good, and you, you stated it more eloquently than I ever could have, so, there you go. Um, but yeah, also with the fourth, social media was just so positive, like everything was positive. One person was negative and then everybody else in the whole world jumped on us, but, um, because of how wonderful it was, so.
And, and a lot of kudos to Jason and his folks who worked so hard. He has just done an incredible job.
A rock star, yeah.
I believe at midnight, he was telling his people, go home.
He was.
That was actually twelve fifty.
So they worked a ton of hours, um, to put on a great event.
Good job, Jason.
Thank you.
Mark.
Okay, um, so I talked to Chris, I guess Chris might be there in the shadows, yes. And then I sent an email out and included a few of the council members on it, but, um, there, there's a parking situation over at Elliott and Evans, you drive there to be looking at that, um, parking in an intersection. Um, the way the houses go out there, somebody's front of their house that actually sits in the intersection, so they park in front, they park right in the middle of the intersection, which is not good for public safety issues and just general traffic issues. So anyway, just wanted to make you all aware that hopefully we can get some answers to that. I mean, there's no signage, you don't get all occurring, so I mean, if I wanted to, I could go out there and just park where I wanted to, there's a stop sign right in the intersection. And I, I know that there's uniform traffic manual codes that address that, so hopefully we can get that issue with, take, that, that resolved without too much inconvenience and everything, so. And that's about it, I think.
See, I lived next to that house for seven or eight years and that problem's been there for a long time.
Yes.
It's not, it's not just. A truck and a trailer.
Yeah, and it's not just this, this, uh, current occupant, pretty much every owner has had that issue. And it's just the way the house is constructed, right?
It's just right there.
Yeah, if you go straight off the valley, you go straight into their driveway, so, um, so anyway, just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that.
Chris?
Yeah.
Are trucks downtown still a problem?
Uh, yeah. They were the South. Okay, time to go.
Well, I happened to be at the, the favorite barber shop two weeks ago when there were two semis, two semis on Franklin Street coming east and two semis on Franklin Street going west, and they, and they met at the intersection. And it was a safety issue as far as I was concerned, cause we had people attempting to get across the intersection right there. And the thought occurred to me at that time, didn't happen very often, could the city stop those trucks and other trucks of the same type? And get name, address and serial number from, from the truck owners or whoever might be the ones in charge of that particular vehicle? And stop them to get addresses, telephone numbers or, or whatever? And at least, why don't you call your dispatcher and find out how you're handling the trucks that are going down Franklin Street? And it, it might take some of us to knock on doors or somebody in the uniform to, whatever, but I just thought that was an idea that you could catch the trucks when they're at their most vulnerable? And get information that might be important to us as far as the truck, the trucker's dispatcher, the name of the company they're driving forward, and who tells them where to go when they're not supposed to be where they're supposed to go?
Right, yeah, I mean, we're stopping a lot of them, but there's a lot of trucks. And it's amazing how many trucks come through this area.
Well, it scares me, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying, it's just ongoing battle, you turn around, you stop one and two more go by.
Yeah.
And you go, and how are you going to even see one? And you go, okay, we're good, and you leave and we get two more stuck up there. It's just without dedicating a person full-time twenty-four seven.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And this is a roster from America, people, I mean, it's just amazing how many trucks come in here.
No, maybe we would come up with another odd idea.
Yeah, well, I'm sure the next time we ever get that, we got plenty of good ideas. You know, right now, we're just trying, trying to catch up.
Alright.
Wing and Jackson Street going up, four south square, that's pretty good.
Yeah, there was a whole lot, we can get them to there.
Present those terms, Jackson Street.
See you soon.
Uh, part of it's now under the, part of it's under the official detour, so that's not a bad thing. Okay, next item is approval of minutes for the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. I think that was in your packet. I will entertain a motion if, uh, everybody has any corrections.
That's all, boom.
And we have a motion, a second?
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstain or, um, no? Okay. Next item is approval of claims. Uh, Mark came in and reviewed those.
Yes, so I have the, there we go. Um, I have the, uh, payroll for the month at six hundred and eighteen thousand eight sixty-four sixty-nine. Uh, the pensions at eighteen seven eighty-three seventy-two. Regular, uh, payables at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand one ninety-nine forty-eight, and the direct payables, three hundred and forty-eight thousand one seventy-seven oh four, for a grand total of one million one hundred and forty-four thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. On the, um, these are the regular, regular accounts payable. Uh, we've got, um, let's see, twenty firefighter annual physicals to Ascension St. Vincent for twelve thousand three seventy-sixty. Uh, we've got several claims for Ritter Avenue Storm Surfer, which I know has been a problem, and I think that's been resolved now. We've got Bakers for sixty-three hundred, uh, we've got Cash Concrete for thirty-nine fifty-seven thirty, another one for seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and Norman Excavated for sixteen thousand five ninety-six four feet. So hopefully all that is resolved, it's in the, where Laura used to, where she grew up.
It's been a problem for a long time.
So hopefully it's resolved.
Oh, it looks, it looks fantastic.
Have you been invited?
I have not.
Oh, it's, it's great.
Solved a very large drainage problem, it's been there for a long time.
Yes, and I saw where it took six hundred feet of pipes, so. The, uh, uh, going on down through here, we've got, um, Eco Landscape for the Gardens and City Hall for fifty-four hundred dollars. And yellow paint for the Street Department, two hundred gallons and twenty, just under three thousand bucks. And Henry Schott, we had six, six police vehicles serviced, total thirty-three thirty eighteen. We had two of them were major, they were having ball break jobs on them. Big one, Back Ward, the one that we read about in the paper recently that got replaced for a thousand and seventy-nine dollars. And, uh, the Street Department bought two, two blowers, a hedge trimmer and a string trimmer from Humphreys for eleven, twelve hundred and twenty-nine seventy. Got, um, new truck lights, graphics to JTN Services for the Fire Department for eighteen thousand six twenty-one seventy. Uh, street sweeper, and a one over two thousand and fifty dollars on the street sweeper with Cali equipment. And, um, two, two turnout coats and pants for the Fire Department of seventy-four forty-four thirty-four. Those things are really expensive. And I, I, I asked about this, I don't want to still somebody stunned, so I'm just gonna mention there's fourteen thousand dollars to Placer Labs for some software fees. And it sounds like a very impressive piece of software that really helps us track, um, things going on in the city, events and usage of facilities, so that's all, same as, uh, let, let the mayor say anymore. If you want more, when it comes up and it's, it's installed. Bought a new freezer for the concession stand at the Park Department for a thousand and fifty dollars. So that pretty much takes care of the hundred and fifty-eight thousand one ninety-nine forty-eight. On the direct payables, our usual utility bills we do, uh, we've got about, I forgot, I had it in my, in my head, I don't remember what it was, but it's about sixty thousand dollars, I think, to align civil engineering for various things. Uh, Washington Street reconstruction, Campus Link Trail Roban, our general engineering. Another project, a small one for Marshford Bay was a twenty-one hundred dollars, so that's sixty thousand dollars. And, uh, we've got, uh, truck, got, uh, some loan payments on the Park Truck Loan, uh, Defirst National for seven thousand eighty-seven dollars, Fire Chief Vehicle Loan for eleven thousand five fifty, and Police Topo Vehicle Loan for twenty-four thousand eight eighty-six nineteen, probably annual payments. And, uh, Alpre construction for forty-three thousand five oh eight twenty for sidewalks. And that's about it, I believe, of the things I needed to comment on, the, the direct payables for three forty-eight, one seventy-seven oh four, so I would move for approval of the claims, again, hopefully.
I have a question.
Okay.
I was just wondering these two, and so, card services, I know it's the credit card, but how do we know, like, I mean, is there like, you have a stipend every month that you can use? Or how does that work? How do we know where it's, what it's going towards?
Yeah, um, they only have an approval that, um, so you all approve in order to, at the beginning, yeah.
Right.
Um, and then, so, in the docket that you guys get, it will give the account and the account name, which helps a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, but if you guys would like, we, Mark notes the full claim. So, um, each department head fills out, um, and it could be account payable letter, um, that identifies exactly what all the purpose, um, takes amounts detailed. Um, on the back, they list, um, what account that they can go in, they double check, make sure we agree with the account.
That's what I was implying, just wanna make sure that there's checks.
Okay, um, so Indianico, there's like five items that's required for approval to pay Indian off claims. Um, so the department head fills it out, um, we get all of them, I review all of them, make sure it's just those five items.
And we have to attach receipts for every single item.
I do my receipts, um, to make sure everything's aligned.
Our limits are low. Record that people would probably wanna know.
Our limits are low.
Yeah, yeah.
Some, some are lower than others.
I have a question, and when it's legal, like, oh, this looks big, or like fifty-seven, um, like Stacy had a question today, and if it's a question, it's a tangible, like, accurate question.
No, I just, I'm just, since it's, but like, I think people would probably wanna know, like, the system, so thank you.
And, and we have an ordinance that the previous council approved, that give the, that gives the limits to, for each, each.
Thank you.
Great, I have a question on, wh- what's the Campus Link Trail?
This one?
It's gonna be the one that goes from the one on the south.
Ivy Tech.
Yeah, across the time, crossing middle school all the way out to.
Cause the last two months, you got sixty thousand dollars worth of engineering.
That's, that's right.
And, and. How much payment for that?
And the engineering is, is, I think, almost complete, other than minor things here.
And, and you're still charging us for Roban Park?
Minor things here and there, and now we're ready for the land acquisition phase of, of, uh, the trails, and that's.
Some of that's paid by grant.
Most of it's paid by grant.
Yeah, Roban Park's, um, Roban Park was supposed to be done on July first and, and they will be paying, um, damages.
Liquidated damages.
Liquidated damages for their being like.
Are we still expecting Campus Link to, uh, Campus Link to break ground this year, or is that next year?
I, I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
Okay.
I have to, I, I, I still have to, I still have to purchase all of the properties.
That could vary.
It could vary, but it might be, we, you know, the, all the property owners have known about the project for some time, so, um, there won't be a surprise unless they're new property owners. But, um, um, but it will require, in some cases, getting appraisals in. Um, now that we have the engineering and it's all designed and the, um, legal descriptions, now we have to go the next, to the next steps, which include title, updated title searches and appraisals, and then per, the purchase process, so I don't, I don't want, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I would move for approval of the claims, again, totaling one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second, so all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstain or um?
I'll abstain.
He's saying.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is old business, and we have several ordinances here that are in second reading. So, the first one here is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five. And ordinance authorizing the city to budget, appropriate and spend general funds to promote the city in second reading, so our title on line. Does anybody have any questions about that, or I will entertain a motion?
No changes.
No changes.
I'll make a motion out there on second reading.
And we, and we have a motion in second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Okay, the next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six. And ordinance amending and updating Chapter Nine, utilities of the Green Castle City Code regarding sewer, sewer use. And this is also a second reading, and there were no changes there?
No, it was just what we discussed the last time. Minor, minor changes.
I'll make a motion to approve point, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four, they will six on second reading. Guys, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained during that? Let's see if I got updates on that. Yeah, I was also seeing that, um, I was getting a, an update here to when they might be uh, starting tomorrow's project. Okay, next item is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven. An ordinance authorizing the city of Green Castle, Putnam County, Indiana, to become a member, member of the Serta Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven, seven point seven, uh, second reading.
Can we double check your title to see if, is ordinance misspelled the second? Or did I fix it?
No.
I circled it and then I didn't fix it, so I'm gonna go change that right now, so the signed copy will have a correct. I, I, I have that typo every time.
Okay, did anybody have any additional questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-four dash seven on second reading.
I'll shake it.
Okay, we have a mo- motion in second, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, the next item is um, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight, establishing employee handbook. Establishing employee handbook for employees of the city of Green Castle, second reading. I think we had a few changes to the, the handbook that we were making. Uh, it's also the same, so do we have any questions or anything about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Daryl?
Second, by Daryl.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Okay. The next item on the agenda is new business. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine, and ordinance sustaining an economic development target area for the proposed CNR Quality Rentals LLC Duplex Project. I think Kristen will come up. I do wanna state that this resolution is only approving the area. It is not, um, that, but it is um, a target area. And uh, we are not voting on tonight whether we are approving um, a tax abatement or not.
Good evening. As Mayor Tandor said, uh, tonight is the first of a two-step process. The first, the first one being, uh, actually, it's a three-step process. The first step was to go to the Economic Development Commission for the city of Green Castle. So, uh, Linda convened the EEC and um, with the members present, uh, they unanimously approved that it was eligible as a target area, so that they made unanimous recommendation for that. You have heard of this project, we introduced it to you back in March in a, in the executive session. And what this is, is on Tennessee Street to authorize an infill apartments. Um, there is a corner lot that uh, was zoned commercial. And um, it took the Harcourts two years to get that rezoned, and it's been rezoned for residential two. Um, I'm not sure that that's the technical term for the city code zone, but um, and so that is for multifamily use housing. And so, um, their plan is to put up four units, two duplexes at each of the four units, so eight housing units total. And um, so tonight, we're asking that you would approve that yes, it is in fact eligible for tax abatement. We are not asking you to approve tax abatement at this time, we can't discuss what that would mean. Um, but tonight, we're just saying, yes, tax abatement can happen on these parcels. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the process or about the project. If you approve the target area ordinance this evening, next meeting, we will have a public hearing on that ordinance. For the, we will have a second reading on the ordinance, and we will have a public hearing for the resolution for approval of abatement.
Well, I understand the process, I guess I should move on. And I read point three. This target area has become undesirable for normal development occupancy because of lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements or character occupancy, age, obsolescence, substandard buildings or other factors that have impaired values or prevented normal development of the property or use of the property. And I would say that if we pass this ordinance the way the deed is written, we would be agreeing to the law. Because that area, I mean, you'd agree.
It was vacant land.
Right, so it's lack of development.
It's, it's the, the area that we're within, okay? A neighborhood, a group of, of congru- congruous uses, okay? And what we've got, like, a stone's throw to, to the east, is a seven million dollar assessed valuation. I'm sure they got more than that developed. So, I, I don't, I don't see how.
I would, I would agree with Councilwoman Massa, it, it's, I don't know the legal definition of undesirable, uh, not, or undesirable for normal development, but the two of the lots are currently being developed on, which would lead you to believe it's a desirable development.
And, and you know, I, and I'm the free marketing guy around here, I, I want everybody to name mine. But, you know, Mr. Harcourt says in, in the last meeting, well, every time I put something up to run, I get twenty or twenty-five or thirty in them. Sounds like there's no market for this to evolve here. You know, and I can't understand, you know, I represent the northwest part of town. It's one of the lower social, Councilman Aguirre represents the south side. Some of the lowest uh, property values, socioeconomic standards in the community. And those folks are gonna end up helping to pay, not only for this abatement, th- this is really, the specifics of this abatement mean nothing to them. It's, it's the higher level situation here, when we pull assessed value out, you know, by essentially subsidizing a development. And subsidizing those developments, been doing it for almost thirty years. And yet, when we have a max levy, once we pull, max, it's just a formula. Once we pull assessed value out, our tax rate by definition has to go up in order to achieve the max levy. And I don't remember too many councils not budgeting for max levy, for that.
Right.
And the tax rates go up for the folks in the areas that can lease a property. And, and again, this is not, this one request, to me, is not the point. The point is, this opens the floodgates for more, and more and more and more, and we know, I, I mean, you and I both know that there's four or five sitting here watching this right now.
Absolutely.
And, and we pull more assessed value out of here, and our tax rates go up, and the folks that can lease a property, the ones that are most advantaged. And we already went up, our rate went up five point nine six eight percent last year. Assessed values within, the, the total assessment was up five point one eight percent. So, you get whacked both ways, you're paying a higher rate on a higher assessed value on your real property. And I, we've got so many things hitting us, we're gonna end up bonding for a couple of projects before this firms out. And, you know, I, I just, I just can't for the life of me see the progress of this. The burden, we're gonna be put on, the, the folks in this community who can lease a property, and I'm, I'm opposed to that, I'm just flat out opposed to it. I have no culture board here, I, I just.
So my response to that would be, this is all new assessed value, this has not existed before, it's never been assessed before. We would never take assessed value and take it off the rolls, that is illegal, we cannot do that. This is new value that is being placed on the rolls.
The more assessed value we have.
And so because of that.
Our rate is in order to achieve our maximum lobby, it's a mathematical formula.
Another concept we have to remember to do is, when we have more housing, families move into our community, those families feed our, our schools, and those families have income, and those income taxes, because of the property tax replacement credit, the income taxes, um, a squash, um, that takes the place of what those levies are. And so, the more gainfully employed people we have coming into our community with available housing, those income taxes go directly to this unit of government, to help your budget.
These are seven or eight pages of today's Putnam County and State of Indiana market statistics. From the Indiana Social Institute issued out real estate. I'm a twenty-five-year broker and a nineteen-year advisor, I do market analysis every day. And I'm telling you right now, and I've spoken to a couple of brokers in town who are more tuned to the residential side than I am, I'm a commercial by a primary broker.
If this was.
Our housing market is going like this, it's not going like this, okay? It's going like this, days on market are extended from eighteen to sixty. Our, our list to sale ratio has gone from ninety-eight to ninety-four. So, we've got condominiums out in, in one due, but a broker has four of them, it's in one show. So, what we have is a cycle in, in real estate. Real estate is the art type of the cycle, okay, of a cyclical industry. And we're on the backside of the cycle, everybody says, oh, we've got, we've got this great need, it's a crisis, it's a this, it's a that. No, it's not, it's a cycle, and you work your way through these cycles.
Well, when I talk to my employers, the number one need they still identify is workers, and those workers need a place to live. And you can talk to our major employers, and there's still unemployment signs all over town. And you are talking about owner occupied housing, and we are talking about rental housing. And I'm not making a statement that we necessarily wanna turn to a complete rental community, we say all the way that we do. But I will say that rentals are still in great demand, and the car parks have done the market research.
Right now, our community is forty-two point three percent renter occupied house.
Okay.
So, we're getting pretty close to critical mass here on being around community. You just said you don't want it, we're getting close to it. I have, I have no problem with the duplexes, I, heck, I'm the man that made the motion for them to get their, get their approval through planning commission, I'm all for it. I'm just not for, for folks who can't afford to subsidize and subsidize.
Well, we're, we're not here tonight to talk about the abatement, we're talking about whether this is.
Talking about the first step.
Whether the first, but the first step is not the abatement, it's a determination of whether or not it fits that criteria, that, that is the.
It's the camel's nose under the tent.
Well, I think it's, I think it's simple, uh, I understand the argument that um, local income tax and, and heads in schools bring income. Uh, but to, to keep focused on today, I just, I'm not convinced it's undesirable area when they're being developed currently in that area. It's one of the most desirable areas in our community with the newest development, uh, I just don't see how we can make an argument it's undesirable. Uh, you may make the argument that this plot of land has not been built on for X amount of years, but it's been held by the builder who's choosing to build on it now. Uh, so, I think there's a lot of arguments we can make about the abatement itself, but I just simply don't even think we should get to that meeting, because it's just not undesirable, it's, it's being developed on.
It only falls under lack of development to me, I mean, that's it. It seems like a hot property.
I do know, um, it's ultimately, I do know, I, I sat in on the uh, the pre-planning meeting, and uh, they had to jump through a lot of hoops for it to be built upon. And um, there are um, a lot of boundaries, they had to redesign things, they had to spend extra money here. They had to redo, I believe it was the driveways, on how to uh, make it fit. And um, we've had, uh, one time there's gonna be a commercial that was gonna build out there, and for some reason, they decided not to build. So, um, they've done, they have done a lot of extra work to make this be able to take four houses, our duplexes on there. So, when we say it wasn't totally desirable to build on, um, it was difficult for them to build on it.
Well, you're talking to a guy who got around through an enormous number of groups to redevelop the lot, to redevelop the whole acreage side out on the east side of Green Castle. And I jumped over a stinking line, and I didn't ask what the, the networked film capacity was.
And I, I definitely.
You wanna talk about assessed value, it's created from that, we're talking about.
I, I do think there are a lot of hoops to jump in, uh, and, you know, if this does make it to the next meeting, I have some thoughts about abatement that I'd like to share. Uh, but I, I am torn with um, making up for those hoops in tax abatement, uh, because a lot of them are in, they're, they're put on developers by us as the council, we can remove a lot of those hoops. Uh, things like uh, parking mandates and minimum square footage, we could, right now, remove those. Uh, and I'm not saying we should right now, but I don't think we should make it harder to develop and then say, but because we did that.
Right.
Here's a discount, um, but again, sticking on, I just, I just don't see how it's undesirable. It's hard to develop on maybe, uh, but it, it's being, being developed on currently.
As a member of the Green Castle Economic Development, whatever, fish and whatever, uh, we voted on it, and the only thing, you know, cause I, I went into thinking, I didn't, we, we met a year earlier for about two other projects, that was for some of the, we met for eons, um, but, sorry. Uh, anyway, um, so we, the only thing we were voting on was, basically what we're voting on tonight, and that's why it went ahead and passed three-nothing, is because we looked at the lack of, it, it was, it was residential at one point in time, in two thousand and seven, roughly two thousand and six. It got zoned commercial because Carpent Real Estate bought it, they were gonna put a new commercial real estate office there. And then two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight came along, two thousand and nine, and the real estate market went bust, and they are still where they were then. And now, in fact, it's been sold to the Harcourts, and they're wanting to go back to its venture, so that, I don't think there would, I don't know if there's ever been anything, probably not, because you'd be a real director there. So, um, so anyway, that's the history of it, and that's why we voted it three-nothing, there were two members that weren't there that night, so.
Well, you were doing a finding of fact, yeah.
We, we were just doing a finding of fact, and it's like, you know.
We've got the state statute, it doesn't, it's fine, that's perfect, you know. But, what we're doing here is, we, we passed this. You know, but what we're doing here is, we cast this term. We say, oh, that has nothing to do with the abatement tonight, nothing to do with it at all. Well, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, we've got the abatement schedule given to us.
Because eventually, yeah, you know, you, you agree to this term, you know, then how are you gonna say no next? And by then, that project may be complete. I don't know. Two of them are under oath. You know, scare, sorry to interrupt. I mean, and again, boss them. You know, we're entrepreneurs, you know? We, we're not having a risk hoping for a return. And I think they're gonna get it, because I've done the earth and check on that too. And I hope they get it. I hope they get every stinkin' penny. I just don't want folks that can't afford to be paid. Because again, this is a cumulative thing. And you know, we're just keep, we're just keep, we're gonna end up putting on another ten bucks or so. Who knows how much exactly, I'd say. On our slow water, until it, we've got all these little increments. That, you know, if you're, let's say you're working on a factory that's got six abatements. And you're making twenty bucks a month. You start throwing a little forty, fifty, sixty, seventy dollars a month onto them, that's just possible for some. So, I, you know...
To your point, I'm not anti-abatement. But if, if we're going to ask the residents of Green Castle to pay more in property tax for what equates corporate welfare, I feel like we need to demonstrate a public good. And the argument about adding housing, while it's important, I don't think that demonstrates the good, especially since it's not for housing, which we may differ on that. If that ever comes up, we can have that conversation. But if this isn't, I don't see a public good that justifies asking my neighbors who are struggling to already pay their increase in property tax to increase it, but...
My office is on the annual yield.
Thank you.
It's in her world. A lot of brokers have that stuff. You can't, it was after the kids on the school. And maybe it's, by the time we did four, five more of these, you know, maybe it's four, five dollars a month. Maybe it's four, five dollars a year, you know? It's a cumulative effect, and we're gonna be piling more and more on. We know that. I mean, you come to us one of these days with a hundred and forty unit building in town. Well, how's that gonna, how's the city gonna pay whatever share it is that we're gonna pay? We're gonna have to bomb. It's, it's a cumulative effect. And I said, if you stop these things now, because if you don't, we're gonna have a parade. Of course, I haven't talked to someone. And these are people who don't need the money, try to play. Yet they said, hey, they get it, under me. And that's, that is the person who sat, and it's a bad person.
The math, the math works out really well for this development without the abatement.
Any else coming?
This is part of, this is my opinion. It's how I view it. It's actually nothing to do with this proportion of property. Again, we're not to be prepared.
Linda, what's our plan? Is this need to be moved along right away, or is it something we could pull back? No, part of the problem is, when this should have, when we started this, there was no development on there. We couldn't make the case that it's left in development, because they took the risk and already started the, the concept of tax abatement is, if you don't abate, we will not build. Because of the cost of building materials that keeps coming up and up. They got, they got their, I mean, which are two years. And so, they started out and built because they didn't want to increase their construction materials, basically. And so, if we hold this any, I mean, if we, I don't know that it solves the problem to hold it any longer. It might solve helping to discuss it and think about it, but in terms of, you know, what that looks like.
I, I've got another point to add about that. And that is, runs, that's related and essentially, it relates far away to the inflation of experience. And so, whereas a year or two ago, we might say, well, I could probably get a thousand bucks or a hundred bucks. Now, from what I'm being told for two to, you're looking at least thirteen to fourteen. And background water managers getting thirteen, I think it's all right. Zink mill terrorists is getting thirteen ninety-five for two to one. So, market risk is going. You know, you're saying, Chris is saying, I get twenty-five, forty-seven, I'm gonna put something up. Market risk has been essentially... Interest rate risk may be on decline too, because of course today, they're talking, oh gee whiz, inflation actually down last month. We're on a three percent eighty point run, we're on inflation. This opens up for a September rate cut. So, interest rate risk may, may be a little bit low. So, all the arguments kind of fall flat. And, but again, it's not just for this. It's for all these subsequent arguments we're gonna face. Lori says it. Linda says it in the last meeting. Hey, they're coming. Get used to it, guys. Well, I don't think we should get used to it.
And I guess I'll reiterate that, that maybe they would come. But the game now that's played everywhere, maybe not when you were developing, but the game that's played now is, if you don't offer local incentives, maybe they would reconsider. So, if we don't want Green Castle to build and to grow, and we're happy with, with the status quo where we're at, then maybe that's the route that we take, but...
I think that's a special subject. I honestly do.
Wait, you can have that opinion, and that's fine.
Well, I have business.
Well, all the conferences we attend, and all of the, all of the regional economic development projects we work on, every one of them is getting subsidized. And so, and, and so, it's just, it's a difference in the information.
When you offer something to somebody for nothing, you're gonna have to line up the door to get it. And when everybody starts saying, why would we do something like this? This makes no sense. Let's pull back, you know, the question of our communities, you know, we're no longer, we're no longer an attractive community. We're so sick of expensive, you can't afford to live here.
I don't think it's fair to say that we offer something to somebody for nothing. They've done a lot for what they're asking for.
I'm not talking about these people.
I think that's unfair to characters.
So, I think we've, the question here at hand is, we need to entertain a motion for whether we feel this is an economic development target area. It is not whether they should get tax abatement or not. So, I would entertain a motion for this ordinance.
I'm gonna make the motion since, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion because I think it still qualifies with the, this is kind of the lack of development, even though it's, are starting to develop. And see where it goes, because that's really what this, I mean, this is, this is the same thing for the most part, what we did with Green Castle Economic Development Committee or Commission or whatever. So, I'd make the motion to pass on first reading, ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, Stacey, mine in second, so I have a motion in second. I think probably because we will do a road call on this item, if that's okay with the clerk treasurer. So, if you will name off the counselors and they will pick a place to vote. If we had our automated one, which we will work towards next month, and it show up on the screen, then we will do a road call.
We're not voting for tax abatement. We're voting to bring it back and dig in deeper.
Yeah, we have...
To dig deep, right.
Today is only establishing whether this area is a target area.
It's eligible for tax.
Eligible for, eligible for tax abatement based on the place where it's being done.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Hammer? Kathy? Counselor Asbell? Uh, Counselor Lightfoot? Counselor Maston?
Aye.
Counselor Nicholson?
Aye.
Counselor Derry?
Nah.
Okay, so, you have what, five things? So, the motion passes on first reading. It'll be back next month.
We'll have a pub... Next month, it'll be a public hearing.
Yep.
It's like a reading of ordinance and a resolution to be voted on.
Correct.
Okay, correct.
And...
As long as the public will...
Um, the next item on our agenda is, kind of, these are related to our last state board of account, our state board of accounts audit. These were two items that we need to have as policies for when we receive federal audits. Federal audits, so I guess I can read through all of them on the camera. Can you, one, just go through and explain them?
Well, we don't have to read through the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
You guys have read them, right?
Did everybody read anything?
I just can't do it last month.
I can, I can speak to it.
Somebody can do a summary, or Lori, you want Lori to...
Well, basically, we have a, yeah, we have these federal grants. We have a lot of federal grants right now, or several, several federal grants. And so, during our recent audit, they said we needed this policy. And where was our policy? No, most communities, I'm not sure any communities knew they needed this policy. So, our grant administrator gave us two policies that they, that the state board of accounts provided to them, saying this is what is needed, along with the list of all the communities that needed to pass the same thing. And we were on a long list of, of, that she sent out. So, basically, the first one says, we'll follow federal laws, which we do anyway. We're familiar, if you, you know, if you purchase land, you have certain, I, I've, I've done it several ti, many times. There are a whole set of different rules you have to follow. We already do this thing, you know, this is basically stating that we have to follow the laws, which we already do and we know. But we will state it, that we have incorporated these, and that we'll follow that. And spending the federal funds, the same, it's the same sort of thing that we spend it based on the, the items that are in the federal grant that we receive, that we, that we stick to those, only those items. We're subject to audits for several years. All of our subcontractors have to be, have to, to submit to the same rules. That's, that sort of thing. That's what this is. To, to...
I move with the rule.
There you go. There you go. That's enough.
My question, I can think back off the...
Okay, we've got a motion in second. We'll do one at a time, if that's okay, for the costs per...
Yeah, Michaela, did you have anything else to add? Sorry.
Well, I was just gonna, you guys probably think you care. I hope you care.
I care. I care.
So, every federal grant, each of them have their own set of, like, rules and regulations. Yeah, requirements, it's laid out in, in the code of federal regulations. So, when we apply for these grants, we sign our agreements with the funding. All of this information is laid out in each and every single agreement. And then there's also a clause in every single contract that we will follow to CFR code of federal regulations. And then it's, you know, reporting dot day-to-day for whatever each specific one is. So, like, we've already covered our bases in one. Two, most of our, when we do an individual grant, I found where we've had individual policies for the individual grants that we have. And in a subpart, I think it's subpart B, not subpart E, just kind of a different section of the code of federal regulations, there's this fourth clause that says that we need a cost of spending policy and then a procurement policy for all federal grants that we, we, that we receive and may receive in the future. So, we've always been doing these things. We've always had it in writing that we're doing them. This is just an additional, we will do this for all federal money. And bringing it to you guys so that you guys are also aware that we're doing our part. That's what I can say out of things. So, I think we may, we have a second, and David in second, so all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have our procurement federal grant funds policy. Can I entertain a motion? Kathy Asbell, the second?
Second.
Mark Hammer? So, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody that's saying or...
Well, I have a quick question about that. I mean, the federal grants, really, back in the old days, never happened. I assume lots of this occurred through the color of...
Some of them.
And the city got the federal grants like in the year term or...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, I, we've had several. I've tripled down through federal grants. A lot of it was, it was safe.
Yeah, yeah, but we still have to follow the regulations. Yeah, usually how it works is, we, it'll be federal money. It always passes through the state. So, like, our community crossings grant is, it comes through in not with that federal money. All of the our public stuff flows through, that's our...
All the ready, all the ready money, our lighting project, the ready, our, our art stuff is federal. So, I mean, we usually have a federal grant enough every so many years.
Yeah. The, you know, one of these states, they got this term of, that's funded.
Okay, so I believe we have a motion in second, so all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody? Okay, I will be sending an email out soon to set up a meeting, a special session on stormwater utility. And also, maybe at that meeting, we will also have some training on our new system. So, I will be asking, reaching out on dates for that. And then, perhaps here in a few weeks, it's budget time. We've been working through that, so we'll have some, a setup, but also a special session to work on the budget. So, next, it's a little busy, weeks, lots ahead of us. Yeah.
Have to fill my model this week.
Yeah, it's been, it's been an interesting week. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'll make it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in second, so all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Okay, if everybody gets a mind turn off the other, we'll...